Six, twenty twenty five. Our agenda this evening will start with a public comment. And then we will have a discussion on four seventy three High Street for Chapter sixty one. It's a joint discussion with the town's right first refusal option with Historical Commission, Conservation Commission, and Affordable Housing Committee. Next is the Land Management and Conservation Restriction Plan for the Kennedy property at three forty six High Street. After that is the discussion on the sale of the town land, which was approved many years ago from the town to the Dunstable Church for the parking lot. And then an appointment of Don Door to the Parks Commission. See, the meeting minutes have been striked, so that's it. Should be short unless we get into lengthy conversations here.
Is Don Door here? Sorry.
I don't see that.
She's not, was she inviting to come?
No.
Okay, all right. I was gonna say we can take it out of order just to set them free.
You can wait. All right, we'll open up public, so any public comment or anything on the agenda this evening? I see everyone here is for this. Okay, so we will move on. Four seventy three High Street. So as probably all know, at least a little bit, this is an eleven acre parcel up on High Street. It was owned by the Malanson family previously. It's a historic house and is under a nine month moratorium from being demolished. Am I correct in that? And it being in chapter land, the town has the opportunity to purchase the property with the first refusal within one hundred and twenty days of being given notification that the property is going to be sold before it can go through a private party sale. So they did submit that on April seventeenth of this year. So here we are. There has been some discussion among some of the boards that are present tonight expressing interest in the property or interest in the house, different angles on things. So we figured we'd call everybody here together and just have a group discussion in essence of time.
Should I call a formal committee to order?
Yes.
Yeah, if we have any other groups.
Yeah, and also if there's a historic.
Call us to order then.
Okay, you called to order.
I will call the Historical Commission to order.
Okay.
I'm not sure I know everybody on all the committees, so maybe we could go around and introduce ourselves.
Yeah. Do it quickly, sure. Okay, so you're the prospective buyers.
Oh, okay.
I think you know everybody else, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I don't know, I don't know everybody in the other committees.
Good.
Kevin Merzick, Historical Commission. Carol Vick, Historical and Affordable Housing.
Anne Davis, Historical Commission.
And what's that, Historical Commission?
Alan Ching, Conservation.
John, you in any of these boards? No, okay.
That can't be true. That can't be true.
Which hat are you wearing today?
Just watch and keep and watch.
John, here's your board. Jonathan, this is the board.
Debbie Gordon, Board of Honor.
Okay, you know us, we have names out.
Yeah, we're all his.
So I'm open to anybody who wants to sort of take charge of this conversation. I think there is some interest in, from, I'll speak for my Conservation Commission hat on, it is a nice eleven acre parcel of land that is sort of lies between many parcels of land that is already preserved either by the town or the Conservation Commission or through conservation restrictions. So I wouldn't say it's necessarily a strategic piece, but it's an interesting parcel that really could help with a corridor and just securing more open space up there. There are some wetlands on the property, but it's not inundated with wetlands. So there are, at least at this point, appears to be some buildable land there. It's my understanding that the Historical Commission is interested in the house and probably a larger homestead aspect of it, but I'm not sure.
Yes. We were all unanimous in our decision to enact the demolition delay by law. And, you know, it's not something that we've ever had to enact, actually. I've been on the commission for eighteen years, and this was the first time this type of thing has come up. So it was unusual for us. Generally, people, you know, are interested in preserving and maintaining their houses in Dunstable to the older homes. So it was a tough one for us, and we were all very, felt very strongly because of the associations with Amos Kendall. Brian brought up something that I thought was really interesting in the conversation about the landscape being important as well because of the associations with the farm. You know, there's a lot of talk now in preservation about the heritage landscapes and agricultural landscapes, and this was an important point, I think, in the discussions. So the land, as well as the house, is an important asset to preserve, I believe. That's my thought. Did you want to add anything, Brian, to that?
Just that there, you know, you're in communication with one another, the landscape and the buildings, it's all part of the same package, I think, when you think about the preservation angle.
Yeah, and Carol read Amos Kendall's autobiography.
Extremely glowing.
She just logged through it, and there were a lot of references in his own autobiography to hit the farm, which is interesting, you know, because a lot of people, when they look back on their life, they reflect on where they began. And you said there were references to strange stone walls.
Yeah, they were very proud of Samuel Brook because the entire property was well run on the acres.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They thought.
So that was, you know, felt very strongly about enacting the demolition delay. I have not personally been in the house. I don't know if anybody here has been.
Yes.
Oh, you've been in.
And Alan's been in.
Yeah. But, you know, I think that might be the next step in the process. And, you know, I did, I was contacted yesterday by the developer, who's, don't think it's me. Oh, was it? I talked to Patrick yesterday. And he was expressing an interest in possibly selling off the house as a separate lot, carving that out as a, and you all might be able to speak to this better than I, but it's an interest in carving out the lot.
Yeah, people are cousins of the acres, and so, hoping, jealous, one of the reasons we bought the property is jealous that the bigger room is a dust bowl and we would build a house here. So there is ability to be able to carve out a lot. So again, as you guys know, it's typical with older houses. So we're open to some suggestions like how to do this, you know, how do we get the house, observe it. We heard that last name, there was a lot of history about it. So I think maybe there's some sort of partnership or how do we get to the point that we can make this house viable? At the same time, the last thing you guys got to do is buy a house, and then we all have to invest money to put into some sort of special that's, you know, livable or it's community wants to keep it as, like, you know, a historical location where people can visit or something. I think you're seeing enough of that. So question is, how do we get to that point? And then we're all definitely about to discuss how do we get there, how do we make it happen? Because the last thing we're gonna do is just let it off, just fall apart on the way.
But you all applied for the demolition, demolition.
Yeah, which is standard stuff, because a house is a definition, but if there's a way to somewhat work together and save it, you know, it's always a competition role to have.
I think originally, when he was looking at the house, he didn't think it was able to much prefer repair or possibly putting so much money into it, because if you're going to do work, if you want to do it properly, you just don't just do it, you know, TLC. But if you wanted to make a look back to or restore back, you know, so you're gonna be putting a lot of money into it, and it's something he didn't have all this extra money to put into the house, you know, that's why we originally just did the demo thing because we didn't think it was something we could fix. But it's something we can talk about, we can have a conversation and go through that process, because something we did, you know, we had to get together and go through that, you know? We haven't had the chance to do that right now, but that's what we're gonna be doing to sit down and talk about the house.
Yeah.
And assuming we were to red, assuming they wanted to bring some aspects of the area into place, let's put a, like, on the outside, maybe, I don't know what you guys think, are there need to be a string of circle on the outside, on the inside? We don't care what happens with it. I don't know, that's a kind of moral conversation, how do we all work out?
I think you mentioned the law there, the law, something.
We're trying to figure out something. Now, you all, you're not going orders at this point.
Like, you know, this is part of the process. So one of the things, process that the community gets an opportunity to go ahead and buy it if they didn't want to buy it, then we buy it. But that's what we're hearing happen to open this competition, to see what we can do, what we can't do in terms of what's an option, what's not an option, you know?
Is the entire house historic? I don't believe, because there's an addition in the background.
There's an addition, there's actually something else altogether.
But the soapbox form, the form of the front of the building in the soapbox that was formed back, but not the addition in the back.
Okay.
If you want to give a story, there was a open shed facing to the west on there, air pictures, and if you want to restore that, you could, because you didn't say there are pictures, but the addition now on there is not historic, correct?
And is the land designated historic or is it just the home? I don't know enough about historic designations.
This is the age tax.
It's, the land, well, the barn is a separate lot now.
That's a different person.
Yeah, that's been sold.
They're not driven one law, they were separated. The land is historic, but there's no restriction on that.
Yes, it's a fifty, it's a fifty years, has to go to the right end of the town, or that's supposed to be to the historical commission.
Yes.
So it's a danger, like, so I'm not sure.
One time.
Yeah, we review the demolitions for anything that's older than fifty years. Dana lets us know. We meet and, because it just doesn't happen very often to go through that for me.
Has there been any review by any structural engineer or builder that says the house is able to be restored?
No.
Alan. Mr. Chee.
That would be the first logical step. What I think should happen is that the Board of Selectmen, or the Catbird Seat at the moment, determining whether or not to waive the town's right of matching the modified offer, the selectmen should, in my view, say, well, there's quite a bit of interest from the historical, from conservation, from perhaps affordable housing, and therefore a committee would logically be appointed to hash this out, also with a representative from the Board of Selectmen. There are four committees that have an interest here. Issues of financing and how much of the land should be preserved, should it be preserved, and so forth, could be hashed out. Speed is of the essence here. The town has one hundred and twenty days from the point of notification, which is about two weeks ago, to exercise its option to match the modified offer, which was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The asking price had been eight hundred, the accepted offer was seven fifty. So you have, first of all, the Board of Selectmen have this initial role of being aware of if the towns' rights are non-at the moment, matter. And then the Historical Commission, the Affordable Housing, we'll hear from shortly, and the Conservation Commission. With regard to Amos Kendall, the town has two claims to fame in terms of people. One is Ellen Swallow Richards, and the other is Amos Kendall, and he was a big deal. He was a member of Anthony Jackson and Martin Van Muren's cabinet. He was postmaster general, which meant, that was a cabinet position in those days, that meant that he controlled patronage. And the window was no civil service in those days, all federal job toward patronage by postmaster general, because the post office employed the bulk of federal employees, not the army, which is tiny. He broke probably over half of Jackson's speeches. He was one of Jackson's so-called kitchen cabinet members. These were mostly non-cabinet, official cabinet people, but he was in both, so-called kitchen cabinet of private advisors and so forth. And in eighteen thirties and forties, you wanted to get something done in Washington, you talked to Amos Kendall. As a side note, he also co-founded Gallaudet College for the deaf, which is still around, and he's buried in D.C. He went to Dartmouth College and did several Dunstable events, but, you know, he's a big deal.
He also was Samuel Morris's business manager, and Morris invented the Morris Code, and.
Correct.
He did that in Washington.
He was a movement shaker, and absolutely, his autobiography talks about Samuel Brook, talks about the cranberry bog, which is still there and held by the Conservation Commission today. There are points that, you know, you quickly reference with regard to conservation. The Conservation Commission has about forty-eight acres across the street, three parcels. So almost half of the constable portion of the Amos Kendall Farm is protected now. What we don't have is the house, and I agree with the idea that the lands around the house is part of it, historically, environmentally, and so forth. So you have the opportunity to preserve an important historical feature and also a little bit of a sense of what the land was. It's a pretty, pretty important house. Thank you.
Excuse me, Alan, you've been in the house?
Yes.
A fair assessment.
I'm not, I'm not qualified to do that. First thing I would do is get somebody like Ubert Tobi's.
Yeah.
To restore.
Yeah.
You know, we use the barn nearby, the charges barn, and have them take a look at it and say, and it could be somebody else, but somebody like him, and he would say, okay, is this restorable in a common sense, economic sense? I mean, anything can be restored, but is it, or is it a restoration or a replication? You know, you want, you would hopefully have a home that if Amos Kendall came back and looked at it, he would recognize its appearance from the outside. Inside, in terms of what might be preserved, paneling, wide boards, latch, door latches and so forth, that would be determined to be determined.
I believe Dana Barnes has already been in the house.
Yeah, but he's not. So let me ask this question of the, Ian.
Yes, yes.
Has anybody from the Historical Commission been in the house?
No, he's not been.
So we're at this point today, and this is still, and this is at least the way I think it is, it's kind of a conceptual prop, right? We're at the concept, what would we like to do with it?
Yeah, and when this came up, we were all like, hang on, and this is, it was an important figure in Dunstable's history. This is, you know, we didn't, we felt, just, as Alan said, with just having two well-known residents like Ellen Swallow and Amos Kendall, I put Richard Burden to Antarctica Store.
And so, and so, I don't mean to interrupt, but so conceptually, right? Is the, assuming the house is restorable, and believe me, just, you can restore anything.
I know, absolutely.
You need two things, and that's all you need, time and money. You can report, you can, and I've done this before, this isn't the first replication that I've been involved in, I've done them before, I get it, you can do anything with time and money. Would the plan be that, and this is concept right now? Is that we're gonna, that the town's gonna buy that house, okay? And that it's going to be restored or replicated and to whatever, to whatever its original grandeur was, okay? And then what hap, I'm just talking here, and then what happens after that? It becomes what? What do we do with the, what happens with that house after it's all fixed up and looks like it was originally John's?
What's with the board of housing, which may be a problem? You know, if it could be balanced in a way that where board of housing could use it and also contribute toward purchase, I feel with it.
So is the plan that, assuming, okay, everything's wonderful, we go forward and we renovate this thing and we put it back to its original splendor, we're gonna rent it out or we're gonna sell it? What's, Alan?
This is not the place to hash that out.
That's an important detail.
This is, you know.
Like, that's the critical detail, what's the purpose of the home?
It's gonna drive it up.
And this is something that, in my view, the committee would hash out and then report to their coal committees, in particular the selectmen and the county administration with, okay, here are the options. And the options could range from, no, this isn't something the town should get involved in, to a partial purchase or sale or whatever, and the uses, okay, would be preserved and so forth. But to try to determine right now what is the best avenue, we can't, we don't have the information. We need to know the financial possibilities, we need to know what the building, its possibilities are and so forth, and that is gonna take some investigation and some time.
I understand, but my question, my thought is that not so much at this point about time and money. We have all the time and we have all the money, and this thing is gonna be wonderful when we're done with it, assuming that, all right? What happens to that house? It becomes a rental unit, John, is that what?
Could or be sold, or for what, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, it could be sold with a deed restriction. It would be sold with a deed restriction.
I would say, I'm not trying to speak to the entire historical commission, I would wipe from our minds any thought of trying it into a museum of some kind, like, that's gonna be a money pit, and it's gonna be hard to, do you think the Amos Kendall autobiography is dry, or the Historical Commission, thank you guys? Like, the average visitor that walks up the street has not had any interest in seeing this, like, we might kind of inherently understand the importance, but to try and attract a visiting public to it, I would not recommend it, there's gonna be all kinds of other infrastructure that would lead into that. I would do the same with, like, selling it with a preservation easement that then stipulates to the private owner, like, who has to then, like, take care of X, Y, or Z features that are identified, and of course, the easement as being worth preserving and keeping intact. And then it's kind of pushed off on the homeowner and the easement whole time.
The responsibility of easement, yeah. And I think its location lends itself more to housing than a museum because of where it's located. It's on the outskirts of Dunstable, it's, and I think there, you know, if you look, there's a need for housing in Dunstable in terms of affordable housing, and it's gonna add to the stock of affordable housing. And I think, you know, a lot of people that are buying new homes don't necessarily want to live in a house with low ceilings, you know, but as an affordable unit, and if it were restored as it is to a reasonable condition and sold, maybe that quirkiness of the old town, you know, I think, I love those houses, I don't, you know, I live in one and I, you know, my husband ducks his head a lot and stuff like that, but I think, I think that's the one thing that would be appropriate. And I'm actually hesitant about talking about replica because when I've seen replicas of historic houses, people are raising the height of the, I know I'm getting into detail here, but they're inevitably taller than the original houses, and they're very different. And they look different from the outside because what happens is they look more executive home one because the height goes up when people built replicas.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And that house is on an old fieldstone basement, basically, and has the well inside the house, so essentially it's itself.
Well, I think we need to have a structural engineer decide that that's paving itself.
Sure, yeah. I too grew up in a house that's much older than this one, and I know the work my own parents put into that house to bring it up to normal standards, and we're headed down a similar money pit path here.
Even if it's a group thing in affordable housing, because now with the rates so high, so what people are doing is, you know, trying to coordinate these kind of projects, so when you're in the full house, you're gonna sell someone, you're looking like maybe two fifty, I don't know what the rates now for affordable houses in Dunstable are, but it's probably maybe two fifty, so you say so, this kind of goes your point, I think that's where we're gonna hash it out more, buy it for seven, eighty, we spent a minimum of two fifty to put it into it, now we're selling it for two fifty, so cost of town, seven fifty to create this, which, you know, so we have to think hard how we're gonna get this done.
The, I cannot envision the town restoring or doing the work. My understanding is that Habitat, for example, does do renovation, restoration, or whatever. In other words, I defer to the housing, but question I have then is, would Habitat for Humanity be interested in accepting this home to be restored slash replicated, whatever is appropriate, with some guidelines as to what the outside appearance would be and so forth? Is this something that Habitat does? If so, that might be an help.
I really don't think Habitat is a business of restoring houses because they work with volunteer help, not professionals in most cases, so you're not gonna get them restoring, actually, that house was built around seventeen eighty, so that's a really old house, and it's not gonna get restored by volunteer help.
Yeah, it may, it may not be a restoration, however, it might be simply save what you can of the inside and, you know, some granite steps and so forth, in which case perhaps they would be, I would think that one would need. Once one knows what has in hand, then perhaps they might be someone to talk to, perhaps not. From what I can tell, we simply don't know, we need to know more about the property.
Debbie?
Excuse my extreme lack of knowledge on the town function, but where, essentially, like, where is the fund coming from with the town lot? Is it something that's earmarked for, that can be elsewhere? I'm just saying here in the backlash.
Well, that's the other thing that we need to sort. I mean, there are some.
Money, and we're now buying something for fifteen thousand dollars.
The entire focus in terms of funding would be on the Community Preservation Committee and the three uses there, meaning Affordable Housing. and the three uses there, meaning affordable housing, historical preservation, and open space. Uh, those are the three, and there are, as you know, perhaps there are three pockets, uh, of money that's in the, uh, CPC, uh, budget. Um, and then, um, you have the undesigned, which can be used on any of those. So there's certain money that has to use, a pocket that has to use on open space. But then if you have a piece of open space that needs more money, the undesigned, which is seven percent. Uh, is there, is there a significant amount of money in CPC, um, funding funds right now? The answer is yes. John Simmons, who is the chair of the CPC committee, if you're willing on that.
Right, to one of these very difficult things, I mean.
Correct.
But you should also keep in mind that we're not gonna get a hundred percent match this year. We'd be lucky if we get forty or fifty.
Yeah, it's, it's bad.
Real estate market is down and the, uh, the legislature did not put twenty million into the trust fund. So we're really down, we're depending on the, the real estate fees. It, it, it does sort of fill the different buckets of historical, open space, and affordable, which makes it interesting, I think, because there aren't many thing, projects that come up that have three different, uh, filled with three different buckets of.
What's the wish of the historic commission? Some of you are shaking your heads about some comments and not on others, so is there?
We have not, we have not met to discuss this new, um, we, we, I was gonna call a meeting for next Wednesday and actually hashed this out a little bit amongst my colleagues, um, and, and on the commission. I, 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 as I said, I would love to see the house preserved somehow, um, either through an owner that wants to fix it up and maintain it and live in it. Um, the, the Larkins did, did say that they would be willing to sell it at a market rate, um, uh, that could be, um, just for the land itself, so I think he.
So they'd be carving out that, the house, but you'd keep the other potential lots?
Discount the lot like this, that'll have a lot, and then so you wouldn't have to, wouldn't be seven fifty anymore. It'd be, what you would use value, so you'd be like, well, we don't have to come up with so much money to repair or replace it. So that's definitely not.
But you'd, you would keep the other two potential lots to build new construction?
I think he mentioned three twenty-five yesterday for the, for the lot and the land around, the land just around the house and the house, so.
We won't hold you to that number.
No, 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 no. And, and actually, he's gonna send me something, and I didn't receive it today, so I'm, I'm waiting to hear what he's suggesting, so, um.
How many acres do you have to include?
Well, we didn't even get into that.
There's also a timeliness to this, right? So there, the home's under agreement with these folks, Patrick Wright and the current residents, the Melancins, are sort of owed an answer here because.
Well, then we have a hundred and twenty days to give an answer. And there's a ninety day, nine month, nine month moratorium, so, I mean.
And the Larkins don't own the property.
They don't.
Correct, yeah.
It's part of the process, it's had to buy the property less than two months.
I mean, a hundred and twenty days can go by quickly.
It's a summertime, it's gonna be a long summertime.
Yeah.
I think the demolition delay is up in September.
Um, what was the, the number of acres that you would consider?
Four acres.
Four acres to go with the house?
And it's eleven acres total of the house.
He told me the exact parcel, eleven acres, uh, we're to buy it right now, and it's four acres to go to. Why, why do we work that anyway, the two other lots?
And, and, um, Patrick did, mentioned also that he might put it on the market when he acquires it in July to see who comes forward to buy the house and the four acres.
I keep that way too, he wants to make sure somebody just knows what they're doing in the store, not just buying it and then I just said it, and then the new house, basically, to the store, that's a problem, that's what we.
So they want to parcel that, that demolition issue to see if there's people out there that will get to buy it. So we're trying to pull that around, well, buy it too, versus, or restore it. So that's, so be part of the process we're doing now.
Um, just, Jason, you and I talked about this a little bit ago, just the technicalities of the hundred and twenty days, and if.
It's not clear to me.
It's not clear.
I have to do, I have to do more research on it.
So my question was, if we, we wanna take the hundred and twenty days to do our, if we form the committee to do our due diligence, are we, by saying we're doing that, does that commit us to going forward? Because we could go through this whole process for a hundred and twenty days and realize there is just, we, we can definitely do this or we definitely can't do this, and where does that put us, does that, um?
This is why I said this would be a matter of urgency, shall we say. It's not something you would approach casually. Your committee would, uh, get the right on it.
All right.
And the three, the four boards that that committee represented would be, uh, responsible of it, and you would not mess around. Um, and, uh, I think that, yes, you could string it out, the town has a hundred and twenty days to.
Oh, no, my intent is not to string it out. My question was, if we say we are going to take these a hundred and twenty, we are going to pursue it, but we turn, at the end of our review, it turns out we can't do it. By saying we are going to, we wanna explore our right of first refusal, does that obligate us to actually make the plans to purchase it, or is that a hundred and twenty days in exploratory? If we decide we're going to purchase it, I know you have to have everything done within a hundred and twenty days, but can you also take ninety days to determine, like, ooh, I don't think we're gonna be able to pull this off? So I'm sorry, we are going to pass, but.
I think you can do that, for sure, you can take time to explore.
We also have a town meeting in there someplace to appropriate the funds.
Correct.
Right.
So a lot of that, yeah.
So how many times do you need for a town meeting?
Not, not that long, for, for special, it's two weeks.
Just tricky with all that's going on within the town, like, it's a real.
Yeah, there are a number of pieces that would have to be put together, and we can't do that tonight.
All right.
Somebody's have to sit down, some bodies have to sit down and hash it out, uh, take the facts that we have in terms of what money is available and so forth, what the committee's feeling, and then, um, take, get the information we don't have about all the condition of the home and what could be done with it, what are we lost, and so forth, and then make some recommendations.
Well, I agree, I think the first step is to see, is the house, I mean, in concept, yes, it's absolutely worth it, but is it actually worth, yeah, the effort and money that would have to be put into it? Certainly in concept, I agree.
I'll have to see it next week, after town meeting. And, uh, I guess we'd make that appointment through the Melancins?
So, not good, you come to us directly, it's not.
He said you come to them, oh, okay.
Yeah, so they're, 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 the kids are on their own, we have to, so they sit and coach us directly. So we can get my question to you, yes?
Oh.
Does anyone know Caleb Clark is around?
Is, is anything of Caleb, like?
Ca- Caleb Clark, do you know Caleb?
No.
He's Kimpton's grandson.
Oh, Caleb, oh, Caleb, oh, yes.
I know he's trained in this field.
He lives way up in. Doesn't he live in Ames, Farah or something? No, he's, I haven't mentioned, yeah. Yeah, um, John Phillips does work, um, for me, and he's in his late seventies. He would not be one that would wanna, I think, uh, take on the scope of this project, but I think he could give us a good, honest opinion on, on the restoration a- as well as utilities, I think we could get several people to offer their suggestions.
Is the house dry?
Dry?
Yeah, it's dry.
No, it's, it's a tarpon, a tarpon, as, as it for a while. My, my.
Full of black. Sure, one, black hole.
My, my, I took, I looked around, took some pictures. And he said, I could come out of there with three truckloads of stuff that I could use to rebuild a, a building. But he said, unless you gave me a million bucks, I wouldn't even go through the door.
Bingo.
Are the utilities still on to the house?
I haven't been checking.
I don't think so.
I think it's been big for a while now. Yeah, it's been, it's been big, but it was, even when someone was living there, the tar was over, and then there was a fire in there, and it's just. Well, I think we've gotta reserve our, until we see what, what we're dealing with, I. Yeah, until we actually go in the building. Yeah, I, I don't think we can make assumptions.
Yeah, wear your mask and stuff on your inside, in case it's moldy or something.
Yep, you have to take it back, let's start, start over again.
So, so really, we have a few things to wrap this, it's, it's, is, is the select board appetite to Mr. Jamie's sort of catbird concept there? Do we have any appetite to pursue this as a board? And then it's, from that decision would be to, all right, whom's gonna lead an organized approach in a pretty expeditious manner in the next ninety days, let's say, to come up with a plan of whether we even wanna pursue the whole parcel, part of the parcel, working with the Larkin family to see if they're willing to carve off part of the parcel and what the cost is to do that, and how we're gonna expend the funds to do that? And then once we have the home, whether it be the eleven acre or four acre parcel, what happens then? And do we wanna get into the, into restoring it for just a museum? Which would be kind of a silly fashion, though I love a historical building as much as the next person. I think that's interesting, but then, like, what is the end result? Like, where do, what, what's the finish line here for us? Is it just keeping the front facade? Is it just keeping a home that somehow could go to affordable and be an affordable unit amongst other homes in the area that are gonna be two other lots that are gonna be probably one point two, one point three, just like Uncity Way? And does that check? Because it didn't check out on Uncity Way. And here we are now, sort of in a similar place, right?
Not quite, if you take a look at the homes around there, most of them are not one point two homes that were built back in the sixties.
But there'd be two new construction homes there on the.
Yeah, but there would be, uh, eight or ten that would be like that.
But, it, it, I mean, what's the town's appetite here for?
Personally, I feel it's worth it to pursue and gather the information so we can make an informed decision on, on how to go forward.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm gonna be in agreement with that, I think we've gotta get, we've gotta get a, a more intelligent look at it before we can decide. I mean, black mold, I've been through that before, um, but nonetheless, I think that, um, I haven't seen the house, I, I haven't seen it, I don't know whether or not it's even restorable. Someone needs to get us to that point and say, okay, you can do this, and it's gonna cost you that, and we, we need that information before we can.
Yeah.
Go forward with it, but I, I think to Leah's point, I think we, we probably won't at least take that step, although I don't know what that assessment would be like. Toby does a nice job, I don't think he'd do the McCoon barn, Toby.
Yes.
Toby.
Yeah, he's, he's local too.
He's got, he's got.
He's able to, he helped, uh, he looked at the, uh, barn over at the George's property too, and that was, um, and he was helpful in that process as well.
So do you have the contact, be able to pull them in and?
I do, I can give him a call and try to arrange something for next week, I think after town meeting, that would be best thing.
It's, it's gotta be one of these high level pass or fail discussions that he need, and, and I do know him from being in the trade. Um, he's gotta say yeah or no, or whatever the qualifiers are. And then at that point, I think, Leah, we could engage in putting some groups together, but I think that we've gotta get us, you know, when, when, when Karen says that, she's got black mold in it. You know, I don't know, that's, black mold is really difficult to get rid of, it's, you gotta ozone the house and all kinds of stuff, and it's really. There, there is a point with these things where they're not restorable, although you probably can do anything with time and money, there is a point with them where they're not restorable because they've been left deteriorated.
Taken down, right, to, you know, studs and, and rebuilt, I mean, the, the old timbers are very resilient, they don't, they do not. That, old broke wood does not rot, he's like. And, uh, there's a way to keep the framing and, and, and the scale and the size and rebuild it, I think. But, you know, I think we've gotta think creatively.
It stands to me, subs, where we're really.
What do you say?
Really, we're. Well, I'm saying, worse can be, well, not, not necessarily.
You can take stuff up from inside, you can take out the floorboards, you can take out the panel, and it still would, unless it's totally. It isn't part of the, it isn't all bad.
No.
Some of it is good. I think, I think the problem too is the weather being coming in down too, so that's not helping anything about it, it's more getting into the house.
I mean, there's a well inside the house, it just opens a can, it's an open water well.
Well, a lot, a lot of houses have cisterns and, from, historic houses have cisterns, that's very common, that's not an unusual.
But if we take the home over as a town, we have to get rid of that, it has to go. It's a, it's a, it's a nonstarter from the building, right?
Um, there's also, um, I don't wanna get into details, but there are, you, historic house, houses can be, um, can be excused from, and I don't know if that, that one would be, but.
So the charge is that we have an historical expert come in and tell us whether it's pass or fail?
I think that's the first step, yeah.
I think that's the first step with it is.
And we, I think we really trust, um, uh, Ute Biases' work, I mean, it's very, he, he, he would be able to give us a good opinion, I think.
So are you meeting, stop missing your meeting next week? Did you say you were?
Um, I, 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 I was thinking of bringing over a couple of people that are, you know, my fellow that I know that has no skin in the game, he would not be doing the restoration, but it would be interesting to hear his opinion, be interested, it's interesting to have Ute Biases' work.
Yeah, but you as a board are gonna be meeting to sort of get your collective thoughts?
On Wednesday. Yes, I was gonna do it after. Yeah.
Are we gonna pay the consultant to do this one? Or is it, is someone gonna volunteer to do it?
Is this something that he will do pro bono, just to go in and look at it, or is he?
I think he would be willing to do that pro bono, but I, I shouldn't speak for him.
No, I mean, shouldn't we expect anyone to do that either?
Uh, I think probably, uh, there are one or two people who would do it, um, pro bono. I think also, um, if money were required for, for Toby's, for example, it's something that could be spent by the, um, CPC administrative funds.
And it is a kind of, because of the condition, we don't, we haven't, we kind of located the wind walking across, I don't know what the condition of the floorboards are, so whoever's, I don't know, this is being, hey, that's all, this is the place, and I'll check it out.
It's half step a home.
That's, I guess, some of that has insurance, and if they fall, there's no claim, no weight, all I do, if something happens here, you're on your own, so.
Understood.
Yeah, so we'll have to get those kind of areas, some of that's out of the match. I think if you say, it's, it's, the town says they gotta walk out, that they gotta pay the bucks to buy, rather they could do this all on one day, so it's a big challenge as well.
And I think simultaneously, affordable housing probably wants to determine what in the, the long-term plan, what the goal is of that, if there is a goal.
We're still in the process stage, so, you know, we'd like to have, where we see what could be done for the goals of affordable housing.
But, you know. Yeah, we know, we know affordable housing, the land, we know there's land there. Um, we know that the house that may be demolished, and just a few things to say about it. But, and, and because of where the, where the money is, um, you know, uh, the, uh, fellow was asked why they rob banks, and he said. fellow was asked why you rob banks and he said, because that's where the money is. Well, the bulk of the money here, yes, historical has had some, a bit, and conservation has some. But affordable housing has even more.
Yes, but affordable housing also has two obligations.
I understand that.
Yep.
I understand that. But at any rate, certainly affordable housing should be in the mix.
The thing with it, if you're going to sell the affordable house, you got to work out a lot of these things because there is restrictions on income limitation. So what we've done, we did a 40B in different projects, I was setting houses that were costing me, you know, 400 a bill, but I was selling them to 220 grand. So with the highest, that's why the 40Bs, you have to move the houses, offset all those costs. So I understand that makes a great idea to sell those affordable houses, but you're still spending, hey, it costs 1.2 billion and I was selling them for 300 grand. So that town saved a $90,000 loss to keep it. I mean, it's fine.
I mean, the affordable housing isn't that affordable. So that type of like, I think, I think all of it goes back to, you know, with percentages off the market value or whatever, but somebody else will have to want to spend that amount of money on a house that has those ceilings and a level placement. It may not be the most desirable discounted affordable housing when they can get something brand new.
Yeah.
So it's better for options to be moving.
If I can be a bit, I mean, just at this early conversational stage, I'm having some trouble wrapping my head around this isn't a affordable housing project. That said, I'm also wondering about two options that I feel like I'm hearing is if, if the house is determined to be in really poor condition, is there a way to pull out some historic features to keep somewhere? Or is there a way to, there was early in the meeting, someone mentioned of putting something, some easement on a property for sale to a private owner? Like, are those two options that, that we would want to talk about or explore?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So do we need a motion to create like the 473 ad hoc committee? And what the makeup of that is?
Yeah.
Is that what we want to do? And we essentially, if you got to say it's going to, we suggest that it meets.
Well, I think.
Or are we going to wait for the historic person to go?
I think we want to get that initial document.
Yeah, let's just look. I, I'd like to look before we.
Yeah.
Look before we leave?
Yeah, it would be good to have to our best first.
And, and any of us, any of the people here, do you ever want to go?
No, that's, as I'm saying, I don't want to have to wrap the people on our hands because there's some calls there and they're just.
As you said too, it's a bottom, we don't need people walking in there. I mean, if there's one person going in and their, you know, other insurance is still in the line, we just don't want anybody getting hurt or either a hazard.
So what I believe in probably is if someone's come out of their bed or wherever, they have that insurance showing that there's protection, that something happened that they, so like, it's just like a contractor, that's that insurance. So the town had a person doing, this guy had a person that had their insurance.
With that lens on, then I think it's somebody going to hire for two and a half, however long it takes to walk through a home, whether it be this Toby folks or Jane Doe, John Doe, we want to hire them, make sure they have proper insurance and they give us a written evaluation of what the integrity of the home is from a historic perspective? And whether it's something restorable? I'm not, I don't know if that's the right word, but, because we want to make sure, a volunteer, if they get hurt, they get volunteers going to point at us to say, I can no longer work because I fell through two floors of building for the town volunteerism. The town's not really quite indemnified in that way.
We would not, that would be true.
Right. So we want to pay them for.
You're not saying it's good in there, you know, you're saying it's not good in there for anybody.
No, I walked with a builder and they checked with, this builder checked with the town's building inspector and they said, gave him a head nod of, no, it's all going to go. You can save some front parts, but the home doesn't meet any current building code. But that, and that's, you know, with the historic sort of ability to show some flex, I don't know, I can't speak to that.
Is that building marked right now? Does it have an X on it?
No.
So I think it'd be, the CPC should hire someone to go in, give us a written report and go from there.
I think that's the charge at this point is to get to that initial overview and he's got one guy that said, no, but, you know, opinions are opinions. Everybody's entitled to opinions.
Yeah.
Something ground and some fact that says you can do this and here's why you can't do that. Otherwise, it's an opinion. I may go there and say, oh, this is wonderful. And someone else comes along and goes.
All right. We wanted to look that from the historic, some of that.
Independent opinion.
Yeah.
Somebody who does qualified historic restoration is a little. Yeah.
I'm sure this is still in progress.
Right. No, old houses are generally don't meet building codes. And that's, and that's not really, there's no point here. We're looking to restore it. We're not looking to need codes. I mean, that's not the, if you were walking this, any.
No one's moving in, in its condition right now. Thanks. Yeah.
And that'll lead to whether it's an affordable housing, because that has to meet certain criteria along the way too.
Well, I mean, affordable housing is kind of a, in my mind, sort of a long shot part of this, but, um, would if, you know, the town chose to exercise its right to purchase the whole thing, would one of the available lots be a potential location for Habitat to come in and build a house there? That's sort of what, when I started thinking about this and speaking with some of you, it was like, that was more of what crossed my mind is doing a small affordable building on one of the lots, not this house itself, because this is going to be very particular in how it would be.
Yeah.
You know, even if the, it was decided that, you know, the house pretty much has to go, but the restriction is that needs to be built in like kind, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's still, it's going to be small and low. So.
Right.
Be a tough sell.
Something that was maybe more in a soft box form.
Yeah.
That could be an idea as well, man. Place in city like kind or something similar.
Yeah. All right. So let's, uh, let's go forward with that. And we're relying on you to set this up with Toby's or John Phillips or?
Yeah, I, I don't think John Phillips would do anything. I, I'm not sure. He, I think, I think Tobias would be the better bet for a written report than, or a structural engineer. We're really looking for something like that.
Toby's does it as a profession.
Yeah.
Yeah. So he's, he's insured, he's licensed, he's got all that.
He's got a lot of experience.
Contact details, so that's good. Um, do we need to get funding from CPC somehow? Joe, what's the story? How can we do that?
That's why I'm here.
Just for, just for administrative.
I think we would have to call a meeting and probably have to have some kind of an idea.
Of what cost.
You would give the voice. You know, uh, probably put in an application for funding.
Yeah.
Once you have an idea, not much of a cost.
Yeah.
We call a meeting.
Okay. Okay. I mean, I would think it would be, I mean, I don't know, yes, but five is something. I mean, I'm guessing on that. What do you think?
I'd say between 500, 500 and 1,000.
Yeah.
That, that's like something we can hang our hat on and use, right? That's a good thing. And then, and then if you have the ad hoc committee afterwards, you could say, well, they.
They identified these issues with the house. They identified
Yeah.
Uh, these positive aspects of the house that could make it more, you know, powerful to restore. Were these, these issues, you know, they can fit.
Can that, can this person say this is what the cost might be down the road and they project? Or are they just going to tell us pass or fail?
What happens when you pull the board and find all the stuff on, right? Like you, there's something, something you just can't know from.
We can't guarantee.
The stuff.
But you can, I think, I think, I think what we want to get from this is, is, is it, is it restorable? Yeah, is it salvageable? Is it, can it be built to a safe housing unit?
At some cost, right, to someone.
Something that we can.
Right, because what we can afford is a lot different than what, you know, Jeff Bezos, you know, from Amazon we restored to, right? Like, Dunstable Restoration might be different than
Yeah.
what someone with unlimited funding might be. So I think we got to understand what the end cost would be.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Any else? All right. Keep in touch.
I will. Yeah, we're going to meet next Wednesday for, and, um, and I will, I will contact Ute Biases.
Okay.
Ask him. If you want to do that.
Right. Thank you all for coming. All right. Next up, Kennedy Property 346 High Street Land Management Plan and Conservation Restriction. All right. What do we got here?
This is, um, just need authorization to sign the, um, for the chair to sign the
Okay.
The land management plan and then all of you sign the conservation restriction.
Yeah, we're good.
For the Kennedy parcel.
It's been motioned for a while since.
Yeah. I move to approve the conservation restriction from Robert E. Kennedy to the Town of Dunstable Conservation Commission for the purposes of conservation and passive recreation pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 184, Section 32 on a 26.26 acre parcel of land lying between High Street and Salmon Brook. Located on Assessors Map 15 dash 2 and portion of 15 dash 4 and described in Exhibit A and B1 of the conservation restriction and further approve the land management plan for the same property and authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the board. Second.
Very good discussion.
Negative.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's all.
Yay. Okay. Do you have that document or shall, is this in here?
Yeah.
One is the base, the other's the CR. And Leah, there's an extra space for you to.
Don't punch out yet.
Hup, two. Run.
It's only 5 minutes.
Time freezing.
Alan, I have a question. It's not about Dunstable. Past Charles Georges, that landfill, right, on the left-hand side? Are they just logging in there or do you not know? Or is that a subdivision that's going in there?
Well, uh, that's Al Carroll land, I think. That's been sold. I believe it runs over to behind Duff's garage and so forth. Big piece of property.
Oh, so that's connected to.
I believe that's the case. I'm not sure.
What are they, like, the houses in there?
Um, I don't know, but I, I understand that, so, um, I, I doubt that it's going to be donated to the Nassau lawn.
All right, good job. Thank you. I'll have a great.
The log that's going on, I think heavy timber work and I always just thought maybe they were harvesting, but.
I'll bet you're right here. Thank you so much. Good job, good job.
Taking me out. My teeth.
It's a selective, long-term timber manning, which I don't like hell. I, I imagine it's in effect, uh, but I don't know that. But some things, knowing pure things about it, I guess is, it's destined for not trees. But we know what's happening right across on Duff's Garage, next to the parking area. Uh, that construction going on there, that's the Amazon warehouse.
I've heard that got tanked, but anyway, we digress. I heard that got tanked.
It could be.
So.
Well, they built one in Merrimack. Amazon, I don't know if you've gone to 3D and seen that. They, they built that for Amazon. Amazon has passed on that. It's a, I don't know, 800,000 square foot warehouse. And they built it for Amazon.
It's a purpose society.
All right, let's move on. Focus.
Okay. Dunstable Church reached out. I think kind of an ongoing conversation too. Um, I think there was special legislation adopted in 2021 to allow to this.
Yeah.
And so you have the two maps that identify the property. They're interested in purchasing it. Um, the prices they are interested in paying was $7,500 for it. So, um, that's the question in front of the board.
Right. So this was four years ago that this went to the town to approve the sale of it because it was considered part of the town common, I think.
That's right.
So it had to be.
To the legislature.
To the legislature and town meeting voted to approve the sale as well.
When we did that at town meeting, as I was looking the other day, right, did we have a specific dollar amount?
No, we didn't.
There was no dollar amount or a motion or anything, right?
No, it just allowed the right to.
Yeah, it just says the Board of Selectmen of the Town at the time you were deciding. Um, Town of Dunstable may convey by sale easement license or otherwise to the Evangelical Church of Dunstable. All or a portion of the area of land for approximately 8,270 square feet. And that goes on, but it doesn't, it doesn't pay a price.
I was just curious. I couldn't find that. I mean, this thing's been around a long, long, it's older than I, I don't know. I just.
It's historical.
Yeah.
It is.
Like me.
I like that.
Like me.
I'm restorable though.
All right. So are we good with going forward with this?
Yeah, let's just move, move this along.
Yeah.
I move to approve the sale of an area of land of approximately 8,274 square feet as shown on a plan entitled Plan of Land 516 Main Street, Dunstable, Mass. Prepared by Norse, Norse Design Services Incorporated to the Evangelical Church of Dunstable for $7,500 and to authorize the chair to sign all documents necessary to complete the sale. Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, good. Um, appointment of Dawn Door to the Parks Commission.
So she's not here, but she's, she knows, she's, she's okay with this, right, Dawn?
Yeah, Dawn is currently, she's been on a recommission request since.
Right.
So, um, she is aware of what's detailed in it.
What, yeah, right.
Yeah, in the parks.
They often meet together.
Who, who left Parks?
Uh, Dawn Thibodeau, she moved.
Yeah.
So she, um, yeah, she's on, in Parks already voted to appoint.
Okay.
I move to appoint Dawn Door to the Parks Commission for a term to expire June 30th, 2026. Second. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. That's it, no minutes. Town Administrator Report. Anything other than budget, 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 Jason?
Oh, what are we, MCO is meeting with ZBA, that's a nice step in the right direction.
Their sign is up, so it is happening.
It's tentatively scheduled for the first Thursday and, you know, I think that's the fifth.
They're meeting with ZBA.
For the MCO cottages in June.
Yeah, tentatively June 5th, Thursday.
Coming up.
Yeah, budget, it's happening. A town meeting's happening. We had briefing last week, a remote briefing that I felt went okay.
Was it well attended?
Twenty-one to twenty-seven people.
Total, twenty-seven, yeah, twenty-seven total.
We jumped in for a little bit, it was good. Yeah, some good questions and stuff.
Yeah.
It was the most attended of all the events that we've been having because it was the one that was the most heavily attended.
Yeah.
It's getting some good views on U2 as well.
Oh, good. We finally got that planning assistance grant for twenty thousand dollars to help us with the open space and rec plan.
Yay.
Still trying to close the, get everything fully executed with the grant contract and everything, but.
So an update on, we did get it extended for another three years.
Correct.
So we have a little more time to work on this.
We have some breathing room.
Yeah.
Yeah. We had our first public meeting for Dunstable Community Power last night here and we have another meeting tomorrow at the library. So that's, that's going well. That rollout, I think, is going well.
Do we, do we have just a question, right? I think the rollout was like a ten. Do we have a lot of people opting out or do we not know that yet?
I don't know that yet. There were about.
I don't think it starts until June.
June, June, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, right, right, right. But there's, there's a deadline for U2 opt-out and the opt-out notice has gone out and all that. How many people were there last, I think, ten? Eight?
Yeah, I'd say eight.
Yeah, it's a.
Wait, the deadline to opt-out started already?
Well, the, the opt-out notice went out. I don't know what the deadline is on the public end, but everyone's received a notice and.
Yeah.
Yeah. The, the programming aspect of that mini-grant we got from Greater Whole Health Alliance has started. So you may have heard the Zumba music underneath us tonight. We had Zumba here tonight. And we have, we have another exercise class on Mondays. And then we partnered with Telly Farms to do like a mini farmer's market at the Senior Lancher. The first one was last week. So, yeah, that's, that's a.
I'll selfishly say that Townsend is hosting an MVP Nashville River Water Cell Association Flood Forum tomorrow. It's virtual from two to three. You're welcome to sign up. I sent it out to most of you guys here. But it's through an MVP product and helping the town of Townsend, but open to any towns in the area that are part of the MVP. You know, FEMA, funding, yada, yada, yada. And that, it's an interesting setup in that town and they're worked with MRPC as a rural community.
Oh, really?
Yeah, which might be something for us to explore at some point because it's getting more and more challenging for us to say we're, you know, we're not quite a Bill Ricker. We're not quite a Tewksbury. We're not a Lowell. But I think we're a little bit closer to a Townsend or to an Ashby, an Ashbraham in terms of our rural proximity and sort of setup.
Well, we're sort of outliers in a lot of these groups. We're part of NIMCOG and we don't fit in there. We're part of Middlesex First District and we're not really.
Yeah.
We're sort of a very different kind for those.
Some of the grant opportunities through MRPC and their leadership is, I've been pretty impressed with some of the things they've got going for Townsend as well as some other towns in that area. Not that it's perfect by any means, but there's some funding out there.
Get up, get on.
Yeah, yeah. Give you up. I've hit on a couple already, so it's interesting.
Cool. All right, is there anything else? There being nothing? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The time has stood still on that.
Yeah, mine is coming in.